Welcome to open session of the Orville City Council meeting. We've just reconvened from closed session where a direction was given, no action was taken. Madam Clerk, I'd like to make note that the mayor arrived at closed session at approximately 4:05 PM.
Could I also add that I was here early, but I was in a meeting with Mr. Legrone, and so I wasn't here for the attendance call.
You stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Salute.
Pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Looking for an adoption of the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification or for everybody's information, this is a new audiovisual system that we are working on with tonight, and apparently don't work very well.
Okay, well, while we're waiting for some technical difficulties to be worked out, Madam Clerk, let's take a roll on the vote to adopt the agenda.
Councilmember Hatley.
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goodson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper.
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds.
Yes. To public communication, is there anyone who wishes to speak on adopting the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there are no public speakers on adopting the agenda.
Thank you. Public communication, this is a time for anyone to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers on this, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public speaker, blue cards for public comment.
Having no speakers, moving on. Looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar? And I'd like to poll number four, please.
Jackie? I think you have somebody request to pull one of the consent agenda items.
I got six.
No, I think you also have one of the cards.
I have public speaker cards for two and seven.
Okay. So, we're looking for a motion to adopt the agenda, pulling items number four and six.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar exempt two and seven.
I'll second that.
And item number six as well was...
I asked for four as well.
Two, four, six, and seven.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar exempt items two, four, six, and seven.
And I'll second that.
No, because it normally pops up there. And it's showing...
Madam Clerk, looking for a roll call on the vote.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatley?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
And Carries?
Okay. We have speakers on item number two?
Public Speaker Kevin Thompson?
One way or another, you know, come to our law enforcement, do I not? I do have a couple of minutes in, and this is concerning Officer...
Not up there.
I'm sorry. Officer Joe Dale, and I understand that he's, you know, in the running, or he has been appointed or will be to be our Chief of Police. And I can get up here and I can bash him, and I can do a lot of different things, but that's not why I'm standing. I want to let you know that it's not a better man on this side of heaven, in my opinion, that would operate and serve us as a community than Mr. Joe Dale. I just stood up to just say, you know, whatever happens, I don't know what stage we in, but I think that this man is heaven sent for our community. I didn't just meet him, I've known him for a lot of years when he was with the Bu County Sheriff's Department. And we had a knucklehead that actually backshot one of my younger cousins, murdered him here in this city some years back. And this man here is a man that solved the case. And because of his works and dedication, that young man will spend a lot of time in prison. So I just want to say, thank you, sir.
What he done...
Whatever we can do, I will go to the gates of hell with you. I'm not going in, but... I will go there with you, and I just want to just say thank you on behalf of my family and all our loved ones, friends, and our community. Thank you, Mr. Dale.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you very much for the kind words.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the last public speaker on that item.
So, being that there are no more speakers on item number two...
Okay. And this is regarding the police chief, right? Being appointed, okay, perfect. Just wanted to double check. Well, for a police chief, I would like to ask this. What are you going to do for complaints? I recently submitted a complaint regarding an officer at... Well, he's not here, maybe he'll show up later, but he was at last meeting, and I asked him a simple question for his name and badge number. Pretty simple thing for an officer to be asked, not a difficult task. But he claimed to be off duty while recording our conversation with his body camera. So I made a public records request, and if he was truly off duty, then I wouldn't have been given his name and badge number of the officer. And for the record, let me just say that real quick. I don't know how to exactly pronounce his name, but it's spelled R-I-T-E-R, and his badge number is 3811. But he refused to identify himself, and his reason was that, quote, "Well, sir, you're not being investigated." And I reminded him that he was a public employee, and he said he was off duty. Now, why was he listening to his radio? Why was he attending other meetings, listening to his radio, doing the same thing, if he's off duty? I mean, what's the point of him being here if he's going to be off duty in his full uniform? I don't have a problem with him attending the meeting, but not in his full uniform, because that implies he's on duty. And listening to his radio, I'd be quietly, that's supplying he's on duty. So, as part of being the police chief, how are you going to... I don't expect you to answer on the spot, but how are you going to address issues like this that are brought to the public? Is this going to be something that is brushed aside? Or are we going to have a police chief that is concerned about serious issues when it comes to police and public communications? Whether it be identifying somebody refusing to identify themselves through their name and badge number, or maybe it be a major incident such as an officer-involved shooting? But as part of being a police chief, are you going to address these issues seriously? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers?
That is the last one on this item. I am temporarily shutting down the system to try to restart it, see if it works, we can keep going, but just giving you a heads up.
Looking for going into a service contract like this.
Mr. Vice Mayor, what you have in front of you is the request to go into memorandum of understanding between the City of Orville and Super Subs Cafe for, for lack of a better term, sack meals for the fire service. You have to forgive me, I had a deputy chief here, but there's a water rescue on the river right now active, so he had to leave. He was going to answer a lot of these technical questions, but I'm going to give it my best shot. There's advantages of doing this. What this does is oftentimes in the fire service, our fire personnel are required to be on a fire scene for extended hours, beyond, through meal times, and not allowed to come off. So what we're looking here to have is an agreement with some, an agency, in this case, Super Subs, to provide, in this case, up to 250 meals with me placing a phone call saying we need it. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they will come in, they will provide 250 meals that meet a specific calorie count that will then be given to the fire service on the fire line, taken to them, so they don't have to leave, so they can continue to fight the fire where they're at. As far as exclusiveness, this process was put out to bid. It was taken to three companies. One was Super Subs, obviously, one was Wagon Wheel, and one was...
Java.
Lots of Java. Super Subs is the only business that responded to our request for putting it out to bid. If there was another company, or restaurant, or service that was able to do that, we would welcome that as well, because there might be a time that I've got to provide meals to well over 250 people. If the fire's in our community and we have outside resources coming from outside, I got to feed them too. So, I guess to answer your question, it doesn't have to be exclusive to Super Subs if there was somebody else that had an interest to do it too. As far as the price, the price was set, it was agreed upon between City of Orville, police, myself, and the fire department, to get the level of calories that's needed in order to replenish what they've lost on the fire line. So there is a formula, this is not the first time this has been done. We used to have a contract with Lots of Java. The last time we did this was with Lots of Java. This time, they didn't respond to the request.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could just add, the reason why it's exclusive with the restaurant is because these events occur 24 hours a day. We could be calling as early as 1:00 in the morning and need contact information and an agreed-upon price for these types of meals. These are not for our, typically for just our firefighters that we have on the line. This is when we are exercising our mutual aid agreements, and we have large-scale events where we have large numbers of people that are here. We are required through our master mutual aid agreement that we will provide food for the individuals that are here. We did at one point have two contracts, one with Hoffbrau Restaurant and one with Lots of Java. The Hoffbrau has since went out of business. Lots of Java closed their facility on Table Mountain and moved into a smaller facility, and now cannot handle, they don't have the necessary space to create these amount of meals. So we would be interested in having another agreement with another company. Over the 10 years that I was in that position, I think I used this one time, because of a large-scale fire we had up by the dam where we brought in, it was actually in our area, in the Lemon Hill area, where we brought in a lot of firefighters. So it is seldomly used, it's just a tool that we need in the event that we have to feed a large amount of people.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did get a card from Mr. Terry regarding this. Did you need, would you like to add anything, Steve?
Mr. Vice Mayor, did I answer your questions?
Yeah. Are there any other speakers?
I do not have any blue cards on this item.
Looking for a motion to adopt item number four on the consent calendar?
I move that we adopt resolution number 8807.
I'll second.
I guess my last question before I place my vote is zero. Is there a sunlight, sunset, sunlight, sunset clause to this contract? Is it a one-year contract, or what?
No, typically, we, this is a no-cost contract unless we utilize it. So it goes until, we would probably want to check with them every year, maybe every two years, to ensure that their number is still good, because we don't want to get into a situation where we lean on one of our merchants, ask for 100 meals, and they find out that their cost is $17 per meal, and we're only allowed to charge 15. So we would check with them and verify that the price is good. But no, we don't typically put a sunset on these types of contracts, because we don't, we seldomly utilize them.
But we could change it if something came up, right?
Sure, oh, absolutely.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Motion on the table? Looking for a vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hatley. Councilmember Pittman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goodson. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper.
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds.
Yes. Okay, item number six...
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to move that to the back of the agenda after item number 13.
Sorry. Item number seven from the consent calendar was also polled. Is there a speaker on this item?
Mayor Reynolds, I have one speaker, Tasha Livingston.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to talk about this one, because I saw the name Corporation Yard, which made me think of the land swap that had for the grading on the Corporation Yard, for the piece of property, that there was supposed to be worker housing with a deal with, I think it was North Valley Corporation to, for the Paradise workers' housing. I'd love to know what the updated status on that is, if we're doing something more with the Corporation Yard. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is not related to that. This is insulation for the mechanics shopping.
Existing buildings.
Yes, and I will, I'll talk with you, Tasha, and let you know where we're at on that when we're done.
Are there any other speakers on this item?
I do not have any other blue cards, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions from the council? Looking for a motion to adopt item number seven from the consent calendar?
I move that we adopt agenda item seven, authorizing the staff to contract with Pacific Trail Insulation for the installation of R-30 installation in the mechanic shop in an amount not to exceed $24,302.
A second.
Councilmember Hatley. Councilmember Pittman.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Goodson. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper.
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds.
Yes. And then you say you want to save item number six to the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir, to go after number 13.
Okay. Thank you.
Out of curiosity, how long was that building uninsulated that the mechanic was working in there?
It's been there for, I'm going to say, well over 20 years that I'm aware of.
He's dancing right now, wherever he is.
He is. I mean, that is, it's unfortunate we let it go this long.
I can't imagine working on cars in his heat.
1979 that building was built.
Yeah, so that's, what, 41 years?
Yeah. And it's been as hot as that ever since then.
And our lead mechanic down there, he's probably been working in it all 41 years.
Yeah.
He's been here that long. He's earned it.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to regular business. Item number 12, request for designation of voting delegate and alternates for League of Cities, California Cities Annual Conference.
Mr. Mayor, this is just a continuation of the item from our last meeting, requesting voting delegates and alternates be sent to the League of Cities for the annual conference in Long Beach. Nothing has changed on this. The council asked for some additional time to, for consideration of this. The only thing that I can add to the council that I'm aware of that has changed is that this is not coming back to Sacramento next year. It's going to be in Long Beach again. It'll be there this year, next year, and then it may potentially come back to Sacramento the year after that. So it's an opportunity for training, for networking, and for also the city to enter into the legislative process of voting on what we believe are things or issues that we would like the League to advocate for. So what this is, is you can send up to three people. Of those three people, one would be designated as your voting delegate. That person would be voting on the advocacy that the League of Cities would be undertaking on our behalf in all cities. So what we're looking for today is direction. Do you want to send one person, two people, three people, or what is the council's pleasure?
Well, I, that would be up to council, how many people we want to send. But I would like to see, I understand that some of council members have already been into this training, and I would like to see new council members receive this training. So, actually looking for discussion of volunteers on this council.
My understanding, and I had the opportunity to go last year, that every conference year, there are different subjects, different, the events are current in regards to what is happening in our state at this, in this particular conference year. So the topics and subjects and discussions are fluid, and they are based on what is currently happening in our cities, our rural and urban communities. What I'm saying is the training is variable.
I'm going to speak as well, and I agree with that. And I also would like, if Eric, if you can go, Eric, I agree with the mayor in regards to newer council members in this regard, because nobody knows how the vote's going to go November next year. I know of my time, I got a year and a half left, and so those who are new and haven't gone, I think should have priority. So, Eric, if you could go, I would, he'd be my top priority of what I would like to, who I'd like to see represent, me on the council.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that, if that's the will of the council.
I would agree with the vice mayor on that issue. The League of Cities is an organization the city's been a long-term membership with. And in fact, at one time, we had a council member that was the president of the League of Cities. So we have a long history with the League. I've attended many times. I have to admit, the agenda that I looked at did really excite me as far as my purposes. But if a council member that has some purposes to go, I support that, because we've been a long membership of the League, and the League is about our only way to make some kind of difference in Sacramento. So I'd support that, but I just don't have the time, or I don't see anything on the agenda that works toward my agenda, so.
Keeping costs in mind, I think that we should limit it to one council member, and I would also support Councilmember Smith. A motion on, and if there's no more questions or discussion?
Question, but can I vote on that? You can vote on it. I would, the only thing that I would add to the council is that this is, sometimes when you go to these things, it's easier to participate and do these things when you come with someone you're familiar with and someone you know. I would encourage you to send two to this. I don't know who that would be. I know I've attended a lot of these things, and sometimes when you're there by yourself, it's just a little more difficult. But that's totally up to the council.
How does that fit into the budget?
It fits into the budget. We have $4,000 in that account right now, each one. The total cost is about $1,400, so we'd be at about $2,800 of the $4,000 we have in training for the council.
Great. I'd like to go with you.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And I spoke to our city administrator earlier today about this, about this item. And historically, and you can check back, as long as I've been on this council, I have voted not to go to these. And I stay true to, that's just me. And so that's why it has absolutely nothing to do with anybody that's going. Trust me, it doesn't, because I voted no forever on this. So I just want you to know, why my vote is no has absolutely nothing at all to do with the people that are going, okay?
Looking for a motion to adopt, if there's no further discussion? Looking for a motion to adopt item number 12 on regular business? Make a motion that we send both Mayor Reynolds and Councilmember Smith to this League of Cities.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could we specify who is going to be the voting delegate?
Councilmember Smith.
That needs to be part of your motion, because we need...
With Eric Smith as the voting delegate for our council. Looking for a vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hatley.
No.
Councilmember Pittman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Draper. Mayor Reynolds.
Mr. Mayor, can we go into recess until 6:00 PM, when we have a time-specific hearing? Here, let's do the reports first. That's a good idea, Tom.
Moving on to reports and discussions. Tom, you have something to say?
Just a couple informational items. The city's eligible for what's called Senate Bill 2 funding, which is for planning of infrastructure and development, future development. The whole idea is the state's behind in housing. This intended help, so we will be back to you either this month or in September with some ideas as to how to use those funds to advance potential development and infrastructure in the community, just informational. I'm probably stealing Leo's thunder, but we met with multiple developers who are looking at activating older subdivisions. And Leo, I'm sorry if I'm stepping on your toes here. And then we also met with a potential new developer, the Gateway Project, and I think they'll be submitting a proposal to the city within the next three or four months with more defined performance standards than the last. That's all I have.
Thank you. Leo, we better let you go next before you get your whole thunder peeled.
No, Tom, Tom alluded to it there, but we have, we're very encouraged by the amount of action we're having on interest, and then we're able to help direct them to projects that we kind of have, have been shelved in the past, which have a really short, a short path through the approval process compared to starting with raw land. So it's, so we're positioned very well to help facilitate the process. Additionally, with regard to the projects and stuff we're weighing out, is also rezoning some opportunity areas in town to be able to encourage some projects that will appeal to workforce and some of the lower-income areas as well. So I think there's some good opportunity out there, and we're positioned well for that, so.
One other one that I think would be of interest is a 36-acre parcel above the Fitch Hatchery is one that's being looked at, and we've had several fires there. Development of that property, actually with a variety of housing types, is being discussed.
Thank you.
So could we say we're, in terms of scale, 100, 200-plus new homes?
Oh, over that, well, yeah. I mean, we have two of them that are both over 70 lots apiece that are, you know, one of them, well, good example, Vista Del Oro, he's just finishing due diligence, and we've given him nothing but good news the whole way along as far as the questions he has. So they're rolling right along, there's 72 lots left on that one alone. So, yeah, it's quite large. And the 30-acre parcel, I mean, that's quite a... it's, it's quite large and the thirty, the thirty-acre parcel, I mean, that's quite a few, cause they're talking about multifamily up there as well, so it's, yeah, it's, it's rolling on pretty well.
Hey, I'd like to comment too, Leo, I've received ser- uh, several phone calls personally from uh, business owners uh, who are just absolutely pleased with your performance and the way you conduct yourself, your, your knowledge and professionalism, uh, i- it's really nice to get those calls and I just wanna thank you for, for um, just being the, uh, doing the exceptional job that you do. It, uh, it really is encouraging. Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Yes, sir. Anyone else, Ruth?
I wanna let the council know that I signed up for the two thousand nineteen CalPERS Educational Forum. This year it is in Oakland in October and the deadline for Early Bird was July thirty-first, so I signed up July thirty-first at five PM. Saved us fifty bucks. Anyway, I'll be going to that in October, it's not on a council meeting night or anything, so it won't conflict. I already emailed that.
Thank you. Chief?
I've got nothing to report. We hope to see each one of you that is available to come to National Night Out when we're done and meet some of our new employees.
Thank you. Mr. Huber?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a couple things. Um, I got skipped, but that's okay. Um, I still feel good about myself. I just wanted to announce to the council and to the community that after several years, Gary Lehman will be leaving us on the fifteenth. Uh, I wanna thank Gary for his work and for his service to the city and Gary's been a guy that's been uh, involved in the community. He did a good job for us while he was here and he is moving on to do other things and I wish him nothing but happiness and success. Um, as everybody is aware, tonight is National Night Out. I'd like to invite everybody to National Night Out. Um, since Tom can give away Leo's stuff, I figure I can do Joe's. Um, so everybody is invited, that, it'll be at the municipal auditorium. In the municipal auditorium, if everyone isn't aware, um, it was on Saturday morning at about two AM, an unknown person lit a fire up there in the access area that goes underneath of the municipal auditorium. There was considerable damage that was done to the structure of the municipal auditorium. It isn't so considerable that it's unsafe, it's just uh, the repair is gonna be considerable. Right now, that repair is being estimated at probably one to two-hundred thousand dollars worth of damage to the building. There are several floor joists that need to be replaced, there's an electrical panel that needs to be replaced, there, uh, the inside has an odor of smoke to it because it was full of smoke. There's just considerable damage up there, the curtains are most likely ruined, um, all of that's being done. What we've been able to get done so far to this point is we did get the doorway boarded back up, the electrical panel that was burnt has been uh, disconnected and isolated, so power was restored to the building. The uh, facility is going to be used tonight, we're gonna keep everybody off the back of the stage and keep them forward on to the stage. Um, there's no concern of it, of any immediate danger to anybody, it's just, just a precaution because we don't know yet. We'll have an engineer in later this week, our insurance company is doing that on Thursday, I believe, uh, to look at the building, to tell us exactly what we need to do to repair it. Um, and we are working to get that facility back in a working order as soon as possible. City does have insurance for stuff like this, um, our deductible is five thousand dollars, so the first five thousand dollars is gonna come out of our pocket. Um, I wanna thank Wade and his crew for Saturday morning, they showed up, um, they were there, uh, they got everything taken care of, they uh, worked with the people to get the doorway boarded back up and to uh, secure the facility and to restore the power, so our crews did a, a, a very good job that day, everybody's been very responsive. Um, our fire department did a good job suppressing the fire, uh, if it had gone much further, we may have lost the building. So um, I wanna thank all of them for doing that and just update everybody on where we're at with this, we're working to get this building back in a um, a, a safe and usable condition as soon as possible.
I'd like to comment on that, if you, are you done?
I am finished.
Okay. There was a a- absolutely uh, exceptional response by several people in this room that showed up early Saturday morning to um, respond to this call and, and assess it and, and uh, you know, I just wanna thank everyone on this team that were, that were there. It was uh, just absolutely um, uh, great representation for the city and things were handled expeditiously and um, it, it was um, it was nice to see everyone there. So, um, sorry to see that building damaged, I, I worked there when I was a kid, um, so, but I'm, I'm sure it'll be back up and running.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick announcement as well.
Yes?
Um, the Parks Commission does have an opening that we are looking to fill, I've had um, announcements out for a couple weeks and I have not received any applications yet. So if you know anyone, please send them down to fill out an application and turn it in so that we can fill that vacancy. Uh, we also have a vacancy on the Housing Loan Advisory Committee and we're uh, two vacancies on the South Side Orville Community Center, one for a South Orville member and one for a community, uh, a community organization member. And so I have several openings on committees, uh, for those in the audience and council members, please, um, have people get applications in, the deadline is August twenty-third.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk to you on that auditorium for a moment. Um, I think the public needs to know that we were within five minutes of losing the entire building, where that fire occurred and the conditions that were present for it, had it not been for somebody making a phone call at the right time, uh, you would not be there standing today. So I don't know who made that call, I don't know who made that observation, but the old story about see something, say something, is whatever, whoever did that saved that building, so thanks to whoever did that notification and everybody in the city did a great job. Thank you.
Is there any uh, uh, anything that anyone wishes to put on future agenda?
You gonna have us report as well, anything from us? We gonna do that?
Uh, sure, go, go ahead, Councilmember Smith.
Okay. Just real quick, I attended the ORAC meeting, which is all things related to DWR and recreation. Um, and the meeting went on for several hours, so there's lots of information. If you're interested in that information, Orville News Live videotaped that, you can look at that. But I think one item that's of particular interest to the public, and that is the opening of the Dam Crest Road, so that you can go across the dam, is every, I think everyone is well aware now, you can walk across it from five in the morning to eleven o'clock at night. And uh, originally it was scheduled for August second to be open for, to vehicular traffic uh, three days a week, uh, five o'clock, pardon me, Friday, starting at five AM through eleven PM on Sunday night. Uh, that was uh, delayed by CHP uh, for undisclosed reasons, uh, but it looks like in the next week or so, uh, just, you know, keep your ears tuned, those of you that are interested, because as you know, once that opens, you'll be able to launch your boat on the far side of the dam as, and it's a beautiful area over there. So just in the next several days, we should be seeing that public uh, announcement being made as to when you can travel across the dam and utilize that. Just a couple of points to point out for those of you that are going to do that, that uh, that road will close at eleven o'clock nightly, so you need to be out, otherwise you will virtually be locked in and this is another significant uh, interest, and that is because you're subject to inspection, both entering and leaving that area, and CHP is tasked with that inspection. So you actually go through two kiosks, so Friday, five in the morning, you're going to take your boat out on the lake, u- using that dam launch ramp, your boat and vehicle will be subject to CHP inspection and then you have to go over to the State Parks Kiosk and pay your launch fee. Then when you exit and leave, you're again subject to an additional inspection by CHP to exit that area. So I think that's just something y'all have to bear in mind, so there may be some extra time needed, both uh, entering that area and leaving once it's open to the public. So, that's it. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't see you sitting there, did you have any reports?
There you go. All right. Uh, this year's paving project is uh, scheduled to go out to bid here at the end of this month. Uh, I have the final plans on my desk, I saw an email today, so we're moving forward with that. Um, it's about, uh, estimated about one-point-three million worth of pavement repair we're planning to do on six different streets. So we're a little behind where we wanted to be this year in terms of getting it out, uh, but we think there's adequate time to get the work done, uh, before the rains come again, so, um, multiple streets, some of the projects continuing on from where we finished up last year, so just wanna let you know where that's at, should be coming out soon.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that wish to speak?
I have two items I'd like to mention real quick.
My brother Pittman?
Thank you. One of them is the, I attended the, uh, is it called Downtown Business Association now? They're a little different name. I attended that meeting for an issue that was brought up uh, by uh, another group and we'll see if, how they wanna deal with it in the future, but I have to say that I was encouraged by the interest of all the business owners and a very large group, it was not the typical five or six members, it was uh, I wanna say maybe fifteen or twenty, and they're all very much involved with the new BID downtown, I think uh, they're headed on a very strong positive path and it was encouraging to see and listen to them all have the discussion. The other item I wanted to raise is, at the scoreboard the other night, we gave a, a very uh, well-deserved recognition to Ernie Reynolds Senior and he got a very nice presentation and I thought it was very appropriate for his forty...
Forty-one years.
Forty-one years' service to the SCORE Agency and I thought that was very nice and a well-deserved recognition. And Ernie was there and he, he got a chuckle out of all of us doing the thing there, so it was a lot of fun. And uh, Chuck got the honor of making the presentation to his dad and it was very nice. Um, nice recognition and uh, a lot of things happening with SCORE and we're, we'll see some new improvements coming down the line, we'll be able to report on those soon, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, I, I appreciate that, that uh, that was nice to be there and, and just a little, little bit more information on that, my, my dad is ninety years old and he has served on these boards for, since the seventies and uh, not his seventies, but the seventies. And uh, he uh, he said that he was going to resign from SCORE because he just didn't, suffering from a broken hip last year, a kidney removed and then a broken back this year, he said he just didn't think that he could contribute the quality that they deserved. So that's the level of integrity that we're dealing with and, and I was just honored to be a part of that. Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Well, with that, we're going to recess till six PM.
A one-hundred percent increase in the stipend, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson?
My question is more for information, actually if you can come back, yeah, thank you. It's Scott?
Scott, yeah.
I can remember that name.
Not Thompson.
Not Thompson.
Unless we need the engineer, that's Ken.
Just out of curiosity, I, I do appreciate the um, comments by Ms. Celia Hirschman um, regarding property versus butts, so to speak. Um, how, how does that, how does that work out, just, just for educational purposes for myself?
Uh, an EDU is an EDU, so a, a dwelling unit, a house, is one EDU. If there's a commercial business, that's counted by fixture units and the number of fixture units would equate to how many EDUs that is. So if, if these businesses or if it's a residential unit and it's been turned into a business, it should be reclassified as a commercial unit and it should be, uh, the EDU count should be accorded.
Right.
I don't know, I don't, I don't deal with city business on this, I've...
Right.
Treatment only.
So this is, gotcha.
The city tells me what, how many EDUs they have.
But just, it's just based on, I know, I understand the term EDU, is there just base, just specifically on EDUs and not necessarily on, is there, is there a way that the city quantifies usage as far as the sewer goes or is there a way that that's measured or, um, you know, cause I just, I'm just a valid concern, you have maybe an elderly lady that's...
For the city itself, the city...
Not you.
The, the city is, uh, the city reports in EDUs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we at SCORE, we monitor offloads, uh, we're, so I'm not sure what your, what your question is. Um, like this lady mentioned here, there's no, uh, there's, there's not a meter, there's no two meters, there's no meters coming out of the house on what sewer and you can't really say what water usage it is, cause you got irrigation and whatnot on top of that, so, uh, I'm not sure, you know, an EDU is based on uh, certain parameters.
Gotcha. Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, as a commercial property owner, or I was, um, I certainly understand the fixture count and so if, uh, and this goes back to really city planning, so if someone changes the use of a property, uh, and then they are applying for the appropriate permits, then that's gonna change that structure and so then they should be paying appropriately for how that facility is being used. In theory, that should be happening, so just to kind of address that, um, if people are following uh, the rule, you know, the rules of the road with, through planning and whatnot, then they should be being charged appropriately. Now, of course, there's a little wiggle room there as the EDU count and how many people you can put into a, a facility to accommodate their needs and whatnot and it's not a perfect science, but I would hope that we're certainly appropriately addressing that, you know, to, to kinda answer that concern. So I don't know if you have anything to say to that?
No.
Kinda probably answered it, but...
What you say is, is correct.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pittman?
Um, we've had numerous meetings because of the FEMA issues that have come before us with the housing issues and dealing with a variety of FEMA uh, projects, plus we've had the special project add-on Pollock Court, I can't remember the name of the facility, but they had a complaint about the fees charged and the complication of that and there they were building basically a, a student housing arrangement that had a kitchen in each unit. Well, because of the rules, that kitchen requires a different charge and I'm not sure if they've changed their plan on that or not, but one of the things we had to have a meeting is how are we going to evaluate that charge, how are we going to be fair to that particular application? And um, the simpleness of that particular situation was to recommend they move the kitchen to a common area instead of each individual unit and that drastically changed their uh, startup fees. So there's a lot of complications coming, plus the plant is at near capacity and when we have so many folks wanting to increase our housing inventory, we better be on the ball here and make sure that we don't have a plant that can't handle it. And that's, that's the bigger reason for the plant, it, it needs to be improved and updated according to state regulations, which is a lot of things we don't have anything to say about other than you just have to do. Um, Scott, could you tell us what, uh, the, the, real quickly, the current uh, new equipment being planned for an installation?
Sure. There'd be a new primary pump station, influent pump station, uh, new primary clarifier, modifications to the aeration basin so that we can meet the ammonia limits, uh, modifications to the digesters to uh, mitigate any odor issues that may happen, um, additions to the secondary clarification system and then an upgraded um, UV disinfection system. That's in a nutshell there.
Yeah, and then additionally, we're getting a lot of use from the outside, um, what do you would call it, uh, man camps in those facilities, how much, how much tanker loads are we getting a day?
Currently, we're, we're accepting about a hundred thousand gallons a day.
A hundred thousand?
Yes.
By tanker?
Mm-hmm. We're doing everything we can to help this community out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Are there any other comments? Looking for a motion on item number thirteen to adopt resolution eight... Looking for a motion on item number 13 to adopt Resolution 8808.
I move that we adopt the recommendation, which would be to the adopt Resolution Number 8808 in approving the new sewer rates.
I'll second.
Thank you. Item number six was removed from the consent calendar. Wish to speak on that item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is simply a resolution of the Orville City Council certifying to the Butte County, to the County of Butte, the validity of the legal process that was used to place these direct charges onto the secured tax roll. It also is authorizing the mayor to execute the Proposition 218 certification of the tax bill levy for fiscal year 1920 for sewer service charges. This is just essentially certifying what we did, we followed our processes and that we are getting it on to the tax roll so that it can be collected with property taxes.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any blue speaker cards on this item.
Do we have any comments from the dais? Having none. Councilmember Pittman, did you wish to speak?
No, I was just ready to move the vote.
Having no speakers, looking for a motion?
I would move that we adopt Route 8808 and the county of Butte validity of the legal process used to place direct charges on the secured tax roll and authorize the mayor to execute the Proposition 218 certification of tax bill levy for fiscal year 2019-20 sewer service charges.
I'll second that.
Motion carries.
And with that, we are adjourning this council meeting of August 6, 2019. Hope to see you at the National Night Out.